Mr. Wells is absent, also Mr. Young and then Dr. Libley should be joining us shortly. Mr. Bateman?
Here.
I'm sorry.
I am here. Let's go ahead and start with our presentations. Chris?
Great. Yeah, it's not, uh... Yeah, it should be. Oh, it's probably gonna jump ahead like ten slides now. Okay. It's a little slow. Let's... There we go. All right. We're back, we're back. We got it. All right. Well, good afternoon again, Commissioners. This, uh, this is just a very brief presentation update on where we are in the comprehensive plan process. Um, as you all know, we've been doing these every month, um, from the beginning of the process to just give updates on not just where we are in the process, but, um, you know, updates on deliverables and major milestones and things like that, um, any, any other kind of information that's relevant to, to where we are in the process right now and, um, especially with regards to community engagement. So this, this update is really just, you know, this is really the last, um, mid-month sort of monthly update that I would provide separate from the normal public hearing process. That's kind of the, the plan right now is to kind of, you know, transition into this being on, um, you know, your, your upcoming public hearing agendas. So, um, we'll get into that at the end of the presentation, but, but, um, as you may have seen on your, uh, August agenda, uh, we have under new business, um, the initi- initiation of the amendment to adopt, uh, repeal plan offer 2030 and then adopt NFK 2050. So, um, that'd be the first procedural, uh, required procedural step, um, before it, uh, ends up on a future public hearing agenda. And so today I wanted to just talk about, uh, the, the final plan, kind of the where we are with that, um, and then kind of next steps with the adoption process. Um, and just a, just a snapshot again of just the framework of the plan, so just so you kind of are familiar with, with the contents and the different chapters. Um, and then we'll start though with a little bit of progress since the spring, 'cause that was really the last time that we had a more formal presentation to this body, um, about the, you know, future, we had the Future Land Use Plan, uh, kind of workshop, and then we also had a little bit of a workshop on the goals and actions at the time, so... And I know since then you all have, um, as you know, we had that draft plan submitted to us in May, and you also, uh, had a, had a chance to see it in your Dropbox and, and as well as a physical copy, um, so you've seen, you're very familiar, I know, with what's in there, so, um... And so since May, when we got that first draft, uh, the, the public draft that then went to the public open houses in June, so that was the very next step. We had the four public open houses where we had the plan, um, kind of divided into the pillars around the rooms and got comments on, uh, each of the different pillars and the goals and, and some of the actions. Had printed copies of each section in there, so it was really convenient for people to go and really if they were just interested in one particular topic, they could go straight to that topic and, uh, just, you know, give us their feedback. We also had the Future Land Use Plan, uh, station with all that information as well, um, and then just, you know, just general, um, availability of staff to just, you know, field any questions as they came up. So then we had, as you all know, we had the, as we typically do with every phase, the online engagement and additional tools that followed that, uh, the open houses. So, you know, we always kind of start with, the open houses are kind of like, uh, like our spine of engagement for each phase, so, you know, we, we have them all across the city, you know, uh, and make sure that, like, it, it's, it's kind of that first opportunity for people to come out in person, see what, what the latest and greatest deliverable is that we have at the time, um, and then, you know, give us their feedback based on that phase. And then the online engagement, with typically we try to have a similar, a similar, uh, sort of suite of materials or, or questions at the online, uh, for the online tool, so that it's very, uh, similar. People feel like they can, they're sort of, uh, giving their input no matter what method it is, whatever the, um, whatever their comfort level is or their availability if they couldn't make it to the open houses. So we had a, uh, for about a month from June 30th to July 21st, we had an online survey up for people to take and kind of give us their feedback on the goals, if there's anything missing from those pillars. Um, also the Future Land Use Plan was a chance to really dive into those, um, you know, on their own time and kind of at, at their comfort level and, and give us feedback. If there's something missing or if there was, um, if with, especially with the Future Land Use Plan, it was, you know, if this kind of aligns with their, with what they sort of see as, as, as the future of growth in the city and what, what and where. And then we, but at the same time, as you all know as well, we had the drop boxes, so those were ten locations around the city where we had the full copy of the plan. Um, they were all over the city, and it was similar to the open houses in that there was a little comment box for people to put, um, their comment sheets and give those to us. Um, but really we, we knew that, as with the other phases, there needed to be one more, a kind of supplemental, uh, tool for people in person to be able to give us their feedback. If they couldn't make it to an open house, you know, if, if, if the, they couldn't make the survey or, or, you know, they, uh, weren't comfortable taking the online survey, there was always something in person. So last year it was meeting in a box and, uh, some are, a lot of on-the-go presentations and our champions and just a lot of, um, a lot of in-person tools we had. And so this was our version of our Phase Three in-person supplemental tool was to have the drop boxes. So that was, uh, that really closed out our Phase Three engagements at the end of July, and, uh, so since then we've been working hard on refining the draft plan. So, um, the, so once the public engagement closed, we, we've been consolidating all the comments and feedback and, you know, collecting additional staff feedback, um, and, uh, both internally in our department and externally with other city departments as we've gone. And, uh, so we've been packaging a lot of edits up, just one final round of edits to the consultants, so they're, they're work currently working on, um, making those, those last refinements based on the public engagement, but also that additional staff input. Um, so that's, that's what's going on right now in this, this month of August, and we anticipate having a, a, a final plan delivered to us in early September. So, um, it could be late August, but, you know, basically our, our plan is to have, have this document, um, vetted and ready for, uh, for the September public hearing, but, you know, we'll see. There's some factors, of course, that we'll have to, um, work through when we, when we see the, the final plan, but, but that's our, that's our current kind of schedule with, with how things will go. But, but first we wanna, uh, you know, get, get the initiation of that, uh, of the adoption of the plan, so that then that would allow us to have it on a future agenda. So there's, as far as this plan structure goes, um, just to, just to give you a, a feel for, I know you've seen the plan, um, but just to give you another feel for, and, and our viewers, a feel for what it looks like, what the con- what each section contains. So it starts off as you would expect with a very kind of intro, plan background section, also an executive summary. So you really, you could read this first, uh, sa- section or chapter and really feel, you know, you have a really good picture of what, what the themes of the plan are, the content of the plan. Um, there is also a bit of a community engagement summary in there as well. We, there, there's a lot, as you can imagine, uh, the full summary of community engagement, uh, we, we felt was, was better, uh, placed in an appendix because there was so much information and we knew that, you know, if people want to see the whole, uh, the suite of tools that we did and the details to it, they could just flip straight over to the appendix and see that rather than have to, um, you know, have the body of the plan. Uh, you know, we didn't want it to take too long for people to get to the, kind of the meat of the plan, if you will, or the actions and goals. So that's all in the appendix two, uh, excuse me, appendix one, community engagement summary. And then the next chapter is where we want to go, so, you know, that's where we, we show the planned vision and the framework, how that's starting to, how the community engagement kind of led to that planned vision, you know, how by 2050 Norfolk will be, you know, resilient city, a family city, et cetera. Um, so that, that sort of, it tells a nice narrative of how we got there with the community engagement. And then we get into really the, the content, the sort of, um, the meat of the plan with the Future Land Use Plan and then the goals. So the first, where we'll grow section is all about the Future Land Use Plan, the map, but also the different, um, the explanations of the place types and how, what that means with the primary and secondary land uses, but also, um, the different, uh, different areas around the city and, you know, what, what that means for form and character and, and mobility and things like that. So all that development and land use guidance on that, more of a, you know, like you could go to a parcel and you could, you could see exactly what that place type is for wherever you are in the city. And then we get, we kind of, from there we get into the actual pillars, the, the four pillars, and then the goals and action under each pillar, which you're all very familiar with those. Um, and then, and then we just, and then we kind of ride into the, the end of the plan, which is the implementation side of it. So what do, you know, having seen all that and where these ideas and recommendations and policies could, could be, you know, physically in the city, we, we kind of tie in the Future Land Use map as well with potential ideas where these actions could go. But what is that, you know, how does that look in, in our implementation, um, kind of, uh, approach after, after the plan's adopted? So it kind of goes through, um, how the, how to use the plan post-adoption and, you know, how it's really a, you know, the city is a, is a, obviously the biggest implementer of, of a comprehensive plan, but how important it is to have external partnerships and external, um, you know, relationships to help implement the plan as well. So it's really a plan that can be used by anyone, you know, any and all in the city of Norfolk, so, um, explains that. And then, then that's the end of the body of the plan, and then we get into the appendices. So I mentioned the first one, the community, full community engagement summary. Appendix two is the existing conditions assessment, which you all remember, that was another, another, uh, big document that we did, um, last year, about this time last year, um, which is all the data, kind of the existing conditions of the city that kind of built the foundation for where we went with the pillars and other things. And then the appendix three is the full matrix, so if you're familiar with any plan, not just a comprehensive plan, but, you know, the, typically they'll list all the actions, you know, so that it's in one place, um, not as part of the narrative or the body of the plan, but the, the list of the entire, of all the actions under each goal. So, so that's where you would go if you were just interested. I just want to see what the actions are, um, what the strategies are under each action, but also the timeframe, the different, um, short-term, medium-term, long-term of the actions, as well as the lead, who, which department would sort of be the leader of that, implementing, implementing that action, and then the support department. So, um, so really that, that's where we would get into, especially as a staff organizing our, kind of the game plan around, like, what, what are the short-term ones, what are the medium-term? So it gives us the ability to organize all those, uh, actions. And then as I mentioned, you all are familiar with the pillars, so just, these are the pillars again, um, and just to, just to briefly say that the first one is really celebrating our community is about neighborhoods, arts and culture, urban design, placemaking, uh, complete neighborhoods, historic preservation. Second, growing equitably is all about housing, housing policies and economic development policies. Embracing nature is all about, uh, the natural environment, preserving and protecting the nat- nat- natural environment and natural systems, but also looking at, um, parks and trails, waterfront, uh, green and blue infrastructure, some of those more intentional, uh, infrastructure, uh, implementations. And then, uh, connecting the city, transportation, infrastructure, utilities, and that sort of thing. So as far as next steps, I mentioned this a little bit, and this is all, obviously, all, you know, uh, movable to be determined, but what, what we'd sort of like to s- be at this point in the process is, again, the August 28th, you've got your new business action to repeal plan offer 2030 and then adopt the new plan NFK 2050. Um, so we just need the, you know, initiation from the commission, um, as your application, of course, and, uh, kind of give us that green light to then start to do kind of the work and, uh, get it on a future agenda. So the earliest agenda that it could be on is September 25th after that, um, which, where you'd vote to recommend adoption of the plan. And then, uh, just going by, you know, the earliest schedule, October 28th would be the earliest we could go to a city council. So that's just kind of, just to give a snapshot of how that flow would look from here on out. And that's really all, that's, that was what I wanted to update everyone on today, but happy to take any questions.
Not a question, just a thought. Um, I know we asked at the beginning of this process, and by the way, phenomenal job of steering this big ship into port. You guys, the whole team has done a phenomenal job, and I'm very personally proud of this, uh, and I know our commission is. The question we asked at the beginning was, you know, how are we tracking our 2030 deliverables? And did we incorporate those into this 2050 plan? And I think the response was yes, it's kind of woven into that. It would make sense that if, in the implementation phase, we've got the short-term, long-term, that we're proactively looking at that. I mean, it should be a standing agenda item every month, maybe in our mid-month meeting, for you to give us an update or someone to give us an update on those short-term items. It just really, what's, what's happening and where we can plug in to support. Um, I kind of feel like we've got 25 years to get, to get it done, but if we don't look at it, like, I kind of feel like 2030, we looked at it through every application, but we never really looked at the goals from a, from a plan perspective. At least, you know, my, my perspective, so.
Sure.
I think we have to be intentional about that, that's my suggestion.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you. I know that one of the things we talked about was using that matrix, um, that WPA applied to the presentation that they gave, and, and kudos to them because it seemed to capture the spirit.
Yeah.
For, by the application, but I agree with you, being able to look micro with that matrix and then macro with, uh, you know, some level of frequency and, and updates. Where are we? 2050 will be here before we know it. I know it seems like it's a far-off day in time. But we're all going to be here. But, um, but to that end, um, you know, you, I think in sports terms, we need a scoreboard. How are we doing? Are we winning? Are we falling behind? What do we need to do? So, um, I agree with you.
That's important for us, but it's also important for the community.
I agree.
Because they need to have that bench, those benchmarks published on our website or regular reports to, uh, people going to civic leagues and just talking about our successes and what we, you know, still need to be working on. But I, I love the fact that you're, um, holding, you know, our toes to the fire, so to speak.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. Um, early as possible to get to, you know, it's pretty after 28th, so if you're going up to it, I might slip to remember. We, we anticipated having the, um, appeal of the open and the adoption, you know, go into effect immediately. Did you want it to be January 1st? Is there any reason not to do it immediately? Have you thought about that?
That's a good question, and we had, hadn't even said that, um, but...
We, I really don't believe there's any reason to, to delay. It's not like the zoning ordinance which has...
Yeah. Or about it, your staff will have to be looking at a new plan regarding the new applications. Um, it's, we stopped it, I think, so, um, it's more of a general issue.
Mm-hmm.
Issue for the public to worry about this one to ask them again.
Yep.
Can you have any one of it's after, wouldn't it?
Yeah, right. That's a good question.
Could affect the data.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we can think and, um, just to, just to respond quickly to the, um, some of the implementation comments. Yeah, we, as a side note, we're actively, as part of our edits, we have talked exactly about, um, the matrix idea and the, um, so you'll see in, in sort of like a, what we see is maybe like a model kind of matrix, just something that we could, we could look at for, especially internally as we look at applications and things. So, yeah, we, we certainly want to have our eye to that a- as we go as well, and, and we'll have metrics too, and, um, Anne's not here in person, but, um, we'll give her a shout-out for, she'll be a very, uh, she'll be very dialed into, she's already thinking about ways to show the progress of the implementation online on our website. We've got all kinds of great tools now with our Civic Lab partners and our, and our staff, data staff, and, uh, we can show like, you know, dashboards and things like that. So we're excited about, about the, the future, kind of the ways we can show all this internally and externally, so. Thank you.
Again, uh, I'm sure. Just, just to assure the commission, as staff is making edits, there's, there are no po- policy edits. It's mostly just cleaning up the language and typos and other things and assuring that the comments that we received, that the language in the org, that the, in the plan, um, where we meant to see those comments is clear enough so that the public sees those comments. So we haven't had anything that's a significant policy change or anything that we need to bring to your awareness. Um, just a lot of things that, uh, the consultant has to just change a couple of words and a few other things, so.
Flip a few pictures.
Yeah, right. Yes, yeah, there's backwards picture, yeah.
You swapping of photos, yeah.
We'll, we'll also say that, uh, what we heard in the public outreach for the Dropbox locations, although we didn't receive a lot of in-person comments, um, the people observing in those locations, the, the employees, have noted that there were a lot of people that are reading and talking about, like, s- around the tape. So that's, that's feedback that we received. We didn't get any com- we'd hoped to get comments and say, hey, let us know what you think, but at least we've, we've had firsthand knowledge of people saying that people would go over, read it, and talk about it amongst themselves.
Yep. Yep. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, um, we've got the Chesapeake Bay presentation here.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, our environmental services team in the department handled the, uh, application and enforcement of the Chesapeake Bay preservation area in the city and our regulatory programs associated with it. Um, they will come and provide a deep-dive, uh, presentation on the program that they run. Um, but, uh, I will be kind of just summarizing what we need to do to be compliant with state law changes. Uh, and so that's, that's why we need to proceed with, for the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area text amendment. So, uh, the state Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area regulations were changed, uh, in 2020. Um, I know it's been a while since then, uh, to add what's called a resilience assessment to all development within the Chesapeake Bay preservation areas. So, um, essentially what we have to do is, uh, provide some type of assessment based on, uh, projections moving forward. Now, over, since 2020, there have been a number of changes in the, and the guidance and model ordinance that they provided, with nothing finalized that they provided, so staff and multiple localities have waited to, to wait for finalized guidance and model ordinance just to ensure that we're not adopting something that, that isn't going to be aligned with what they, they're proposing. Um, that's why we're at, we're at, we're at where we are at this moment. The interim guidance that we currently have says that all the localities are supposed to adopt these changes to add this resilience assessment by October 2025. Uh, just this week, the team received, uh, confirmation from the state, uh, that they are in their current comment period for the model ordinance, and so they will be working with localities to extend, uh, this deadline, so we're not on a short-time fuse at this moment. Um, so, uh, this happened after I finished this presentation, so I was glad I was able to talk to Seamus and his team about it and the kind of recent guidance that they got. Um, and again, as of right now, there have been no, uh, further formal guidance that's been provided other than the, uh, interim model ordinance as well as the information that's in the Code of Virginia that was adopted. So just as a, a quick overview of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area, uh, what we have are, are multiple areas, but the one that most people are familiar with is what's called the Resource Protection Area, or at least for us, which is a portion of it, which is called the Intensely Developed Area of the city, which regulates everything from mean high water, a hundred feet inland, uh, as being protected, uh, to meet state, uh, storm, uh, state Chesapeake Bay requirements. What it has is has, it has enhanced standards that require plantings and, and other things, uh, to assure that any development in these areas, do not diminish, uh, water quality in the Chesapeake Bay. And so, as we know, the city has been most, mostly developed prior to the adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area ordinance. We have significant areas that drain into the Chesapeake Bay that have, um, that are completely built out. And so at this point, what we are considered is what's called an intensely developed area, where we meet the requirement, where we can have, um, standards that reflect redevelopment in our, in our city. In other words, not forcing people to push away a hundred feet, because in most lo- in most locations in the city would be in the middle of the street. But what it does is it allows us to let pe- let buildings and other things encroach into the hundred-foot buffer, but re-establish a vegetative buffer along the waterway to protect water quality. And so that's how we differ than most of our other neighboring localities. Um, they have a very strict Chesapeake Bay requirement where everything that's within the hundred feet is either requires a variance of some sort to build in, or they just completely prohibit construction in that area. While we, of course, in our built environment, um, are finding ways to mitigate, uh, in our current, uh, landscape. Now, to talk about the resilience assessment, assessment that's required, it requires for the city, uh, to evaluate development using storm surge and sea level rise projections over a 30-year period. And so you can imagine, um, that can be quite a task, which is what we're, which is what we're struggling with at this moment, because we have to take information of a person that wants to build a shed or a deck in that area, or a new house. New house is easy, or a, a big development is easy, but the homeowner that wants to put a shed, we have to take their permit and run it through a resilience assessment to see how that development that they add to their property would be impacted by sea level rise or storm surge over the next 30 years. And we, we're supposed to utilize that information to provide, uh, that to the, to the citizen, but also to also identify mitigation measures for where, what they're doing with it. So we could say, um, you could, uh, put a structure here, but you should do something to protect your shoreline to assure that your property doesn't flood in the future, or you should put a stormwater management facility to keep water away from your house, or many other things which we wouldn't normally require, uh, for so- for smaller developments along, along the coast in, in the city. And so we've been struggling with this significantly. Uh, Jeremy, myself, uh, Seamus and Nate Bowman on his team, we've been kind of talking in circles to figure out how we apply this resilience assessment in a functional way, uh, for the citizens, because we're required for every permit to do this assessment. Now, the important piece of this is that resilience assessment for the Code of Virginia can be used to inform our approval process. And so what we would do is, uh, we could use the information from the resilience assessment to tell, to relocate or to adjust the location of the development or to require additional improvements to the site. Now, the devil's in the details with that. Uh, our goal is to assure that we continue to have, uh, people maintaining their homes, but also find ways to protect, um, the Chesapeake Bay, the Chesapeake Bay. And so we have been struggling with how we, we use that. At this moment, most localities are using it as a may, may require, um, and so it's not really, it's really just here, you're, you're potentially gonna flood, um, good luck, and then we issue, they issue them the permit. At, at least that's been the discussion currently right now. We believe there's somewhere in the middle, but we don't know how that, we don't know how to make that functionally work through the permitting process, and so we're working through that now with the other localities as well as our, our people to assure that we're not slowing down the development process, but also getting the, getting the results that we want to have. The current Chesapeake Bay program has significantly improved the amount of, uh, buffer and vegetation that have come back uh, between the houses and the water at the moment. That's based on the 2018 rewrite that we did, which required a, a measurable amount of, of landscaping and buffer to be restored for every new development in the city. And so we don't want to hinder that work that we've done. And Seamus will go into, uh, in next month, very detailed, where, what we used to get, and then what we get now and how, how much of a difference the, the new program or the way the program functions now has helped.
Data of, you know, what was put in place in 2018, we've actually seen those additions add value or, you know, have helped in the resiliency, I guess. You know, always think we want to make decisions on an application of certain requirements that are based on knowledge and data that we've been able to gather from previous. So it sounds like we're in kind of a Phase Two of what was applied previously. It would be great to know, you know, we've had some flood mitigation, you know, and this has actually added value, and here's why we're applying more or less.
Right. So, um, yeah, our plan is to show kind of how the programs change to, to provide that type of... Vegetative buffer will always be better than any other structural component that we do. Um, it will last longer, it will outlive most of us, it'll, it'll be, that, that will be better for the, um, uh, for the development. So Seamus has a very significant PowerPoint. It's, it's a long PowerPoint, so I warn you for September when he comes to present it, it's the one that he gives the citizens, but he'll, he'll provide that, uh, information, um, showing how it's changed and how it's been better, so.
Just understand that's a good idea here, but I'm, you know, one application where the, the homeowner was at, told they had plants and trees. And to me, that's, that is different than vegetation buffer, but maybe it's viewed in the same way. I almost feel like seagrass or, or something that would...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Provide a little different plant in the tree, I'm not sure that...
Right.
I know enough about the, about that.
Yeah, so the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area buffers, everything that's above mean low water, so it's none of the wetland-associated improvements that are required for anything that has a wetland supplement. So if you do riprap or, or bulkhead or a dock, you normally have to do mitigation of wetlands in that area. This is all the stuff that's on the upwind, so this is just, it's literally trees and, and shrubs and hedges and bushes that they plant, um, uh, to meet that requirement.
Okay.
So.
So it's not always just trees, it could be shrubs and...
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Different types of grasses that...
Right, and the interesting part is that we've actually had, um, points where people have, they're so well-vegetated that we're like, you're good, you're approved, um, and so we don't, it's, 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 there's a give and take in that process that we do, so, um, but, yeah.
I have a question, um, and just for clarification, so the resilience assessment is required, but the suggested improvements the applicant made...
Correct. That's, that's currently, that's currently how it's being worded and how, uh, in our discussions with other localities, that's how they plan to apply it. We believe that there might be some type of in-between, not, not that you, that we're gonna require someone to install a... to require someone to install a best management practice, but we may say, you need to relocate this shed, not from here, but it needs to be five feet this way to be better resilient. So.
A new shed.
A new shed, yes, correct. Not existing one. So we're not sure, we haven't run through all the scenarios, but the code, the Code of Virginia provides the ability to do it both ways. And so again, we don't want to be overly regulatory burdened. We think the program as it works now does what it's supposed to do in order to increase resilience, as well as increase the buffer. So we're just, we're just trying to be very careful as we do it. And so unfortunately, we haven't run down all those scenarios. So what we have here is the current resilience assessment tool, that's on the Adapt VA website. That is one of the reference tools that can be utilized per the Code of Virginia and what's being provided by DEQ, the state DEQ. What you see here on this map is off of Granby Street, and this shows the sea level rise intermediate high scenario. So what we have to do is the city as a whole has to decide which scenario we're going to utilize to do this resilience assessment to. So you can see here on the map, and off of this portion here, the blue areas is where the potential sea level rise in an intermediate high scenario, which I believe is the, that's the one and a half foot, I think, amount of sea level rise, I think it is. I have to look, I have to look at it again, I apologize, I forget the number. But this is out for 30 years. So you can see at the bottom, it has the ability to measure out in time. And so you have to move the slide to 30 years in the future, and then it shows the type of potential sea level rise based on the current curve that they have that's adopted. On top of that, the requirement also states that you have to look at storm surge as well. And so here you can see, this shows a category two storm surge, that's in the yellow, that has a potential to impact a property or properties in this area. So again, the hard part here is how do we take this information and then drill it down to a way that can be utilized on a single parcel? Because at this point, I'm not sure where the home that the person we could be helping on this one is in this. And so what does that mean, other than we can print this out and say, these are your scenarios, these are the issues that you have, these are things that you can do? And so this is the tool that we're probably going to utilize. We're going to, we're working on trying to find ways to make this easier on staff, to be able to do this quickly, so that we don't slow down the development process, but also has information that's usable. So right now, I don't know how usable this is, if we're kind of at the edge. So we're going to try to find ways to grab these, maybe utilize them in our own GIS system and other ways. But again, these are things that we are working towards finalizing before we bring anything forward.
Address location, say in 30 years, here's where, you know, what you're putting in might be underwater, so you may want to, yeah, this is why we're doing it.
Yeah, and that's the whole point of the assessment, why the code has changed, is just to let people make informed decisions, right? We're not, people can make their decisions, there are abilities to develop in land use rights, but at the same time, they should be informed when they do them.
So it's not considering a specific category, like right here, it says category two?
Right.
Like give them a report that says one through four, this is where you can expect.
So we would, staff is going to propose to the planning commission which scenarios we will use to inform the public. Right now, we're leaning towards the intermediate high sea level rise and the category two hurricane storm surge, just because we believe that provides a fairly realistic and potential view for people. If we do category three, everything is yellow, and so that does not, that doesn't inform rather than scare. So we'd much rather be able to make, give people something to be informed about. So the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area zoning overlay, that's a zoning overlay in the zoning ordinance, and the site plan review chapters, as well as I believe in some of the administrative process chapters, will have to be reviewed and amended to comply with the state law changes. Processes will be modified to incorporate the resilience assessment. We don't want to just do the amendment and then figure out the process later. We're trying to do that all at once, that way we can bring it forward properly. Staff will share how the regulations or permitting processes will be changed to comply with the required Code of Virginia changes. So the more that we can lay it out for ourselves, the better that we can explain it to the public. And then on top of that, we'll also reach back out to the Coastal Virginia Builders Association. We brought this up in our most recent meeting with them, that they know, they're fully aware that their localities are under the requirement to adopt these, and they asked us to have a seat at the table, just to understand how we plan on applying it. And so our goal here isn't to, isn't to create a bunch of disparate ways that we're regulating it across the region. We're trying to be consistent, but also understand that it still is a tool that can help inform development. So this will be an initiation at the end, in a couple weeks, just so that we can continue to keep the ball rolling forward. And what it really does is it provides the state knowledge that we are initiating the text amendments, that they can continue to give us an extension so we can keep working. So that's currently our goal. Okay? Any questions?
Questions, comments? Good job.
Right, you're welcome.
I'll give you time to get to your seat. And we are going to head into the preview of our public hearing.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I have two design review items that I'll be presenting to you today. So the first one is 450 St. Paul's Boulevard. This is actually fire station number one. The plan here is to make some minor, relatively minor site improvements to accommodate parking for Hampton Roads transit. Due to the St. Paul's Transformation Project, there are parking spaces that HRT had been using that are going away. There was an agreement worked out that fire station number one was going to create some dedicated parking spaces for them, the two locations are immediately adjacent to each other. So the intention here, there's already some secure parking on the site, so it's enclosed with this brick and metal wall fence thing. That will be expanded to accommodate about eight additional parking spaces for the fire station, and then the rest of the parking lot will be kind of reworked a little bit to have an additional six spaces dedicated for HRT use only. There will be the same kind of landscaping that screens that wall fence now will be moved, replanted, the similar plants used, and then there is a handicap curb cut that will be improved to meet current code. So the board reviewed this at their Monday meeting on August 4th. We're actually off of y'all for about a week this month, for some reason, and they voted unanimously on the consent agenda to recommend this for approval, five to zero. Any questions? This one is Faith.
Good afternoon. The first one I have is for 7915 Shore Drive for new construction of a commercial building. So here are some of the existing site conditions. And then the submitted site plans, the applicant's proposing to construct a one-story, 6,275-square-foot commercial building with a drive-thru. There was a conditional use permit approved in June 2020 that requires all site improvements to be reviewed through the design review process. So the site plan has landscaping notes to include evergreen shrubs and to screen both parking and the trash enclosure, along with some foundation plantings. And there is a slight discrepancy between the building footprint and the site plan with the attached floor plan. So here's the design of the new commercial building, and it leans towards the modern coastal style found in the Coastal Character District Pattern Book. The primary facade will face shore drive and is defined by two vertical projections that articulate the entrances for the retail spaces. And the building will have aluminum storefront windows with a mix of metal, fabric, and louvered awnings. So here are the east side elevation and the rear elevation. And here's the submitted floor plan. And then here are a couple of the renderings. And then the material details. So the exterior will be clad in fiber cement with a combination of lap siding with three different colors, and then panels with trim in two different colors. And ARB recommended approval on a vote of five to zero on the consent agenda, as this meets the intent of the commercial and makes use pattern book in the Coastal Character District Pattern Book. Are there any questions?
Could you go back on the slide? The drive-through that is on the left of that building, is that where that is?
Yes.
Staff will be presenting the initial use permit for the drive-through a little bit later in the agenda.
This is a Tim Hortons?
That's, yes.
The applicant?
Yes. The applicant has told us that they have the sign to be the anchor to this booking.
They have one on Military Alley?
Yes.
I guess that one was by right, they had to come in for.
The location is grandfathered for the drive-through, renovated the previous Boston Market site.
All right. My other item for you is 345 Granby Street. This is Grilled Cheese Bistro. They are coming through the design review process for their outdoor dining. So in 2023, there were guidelines that were adopted, the outdoor spaces guidelines. And if you, as a business, want to put on-street dining, or have a sidewalk cafe, and you follow all of the guidelines that are in there, you do not have to go to ARB to get a recommendation. You can move forward through the process, kind of by stepping that. Grilled Cheese Bistro installed their outdoor dining in 2021 under COVID-era processes. At that time, there weren't really strict, we want this color palette, this size, any of that kind of stuff. In 2023, after those guidelines had been adopted, business owners were to come into compliance with the new regulations. So the business owner was sent a letter in 2024 outlining what they would need to do to their outdoor dining, to bring it into compliance, or to come through this process to get a recommendation from ARB and go through that design review approval. So as you can see here, and I will, I will say that this is kind of an awkward angle, this makes it look a little bit larger than it is, it is still quite large. The space itself goes from the far left of the actual storefront for Grilled Cheese Bistro, and it ends at about the midpoint of the residential entry to the, what was the Lynn Haven Hotel. So this is a historic building in our downtown historic overlay. This is as designed, this is as the outdoor dining space was constructed in 2021. One of the primary dimensional standards that are in the outdoor spaces guidelines relate to size. What is permitted under those guidelines is essentially the width of your storefront. Grilled Cheese Bistro and the other commercial bays in this building are quite narrow. So Grilled Cheese Bistro has, it's about like 14, 15 feet. Their installed on-street dining is closer to 45 feet. So they are able to accommodate about as many people outside as they are inside to their building. Elevations for these are always exciting. It's a wooden structure, as kind of outlined in the plan, or in those guidelines themselves. The applicant did say that they would, and the board's recommendation included a condition that they would paint it black, which is part of the color palette recommended in the outdoor spaces guideline. There's a range of neutral and darker tones. And they do have some existing electrical out there. They would be required to underground it if they wanted to retain it, they have elected to instead remove it. So they would like to keep this as-is. The board did recommend five to zero to approve it, or to recommend approval to you all, with the condition that they paint the structure and remove that electrical. So that would be the size of it, and part of the discussion that they had was that the property owner, so the management company, not only their landlord, but the management for the residential component for which they will be in front of, recommended support, provided they meet all of the other things that they're supposed to do and get properly permitted. And the downtown neighborhood civic league did bring forward a letter of support for their request. So they've been in this location since 2021.
So what it does is that it allows us to go through the design review process, rather than having to meet the guidelines that are set forth. So this would just be your review of what they're proposing, and it would be a recommendation to the city manager and city council, as the city council will consider the encroachment for the structure.
Because it's so long.
Correct.
Right. We're just approving the design, not, we're not talking about the encroachment part.
Correct. Just the design is.
So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, so.
And that is to paint it black, right?
Yes, so it would be to retain the structure at this size in this location. So they're taking up about two parking spaces of on-street parking. They are overlapping their neighbor's entrance, those are the primary things that they deviate from with the outdoor spaces guideline. So it would remain as-is, minus electrical, but painted black.
The way the code, I'm sorry, the city code is written, it gives you two paths. It says, meet all the guidelines, and you get an administrative encroachment without any city council approval. If you don't, you go through the regular encroachment process, like if you were going to put anything semi-permanent in the public right-of-way. So that's all this is. This is just a review of something semi-permanent in the public right-of-way. And so you can, because you're reviewing that, you can, you can review it for bulk size and other things like that, if you, if you believe that's something that's of your concern. Mostly, this is just for the, for the design. But yes, it feels very, a little disjointed, and we understand, we're trying to put the pieces together in the process.
Any questions? All right. Thank you all.
And last one for design review, and this one will be short, this is just a preview. Since we're a little bit off on the schedule, this is on the agenda for ARB on this coming Monday on the 18th. So this is at the Richard A. Tucker Memorial Library, and it's a design review to construct a new stage, community stage. Here's the site plan and the proposed location, and then just added a few renderings. It'll be a CNU, constructed with some lumber framing. Here's another rendering from the rear. And then this is the proposed material palette. And we'll have more details at the public hearing after ARB has seen it.
The first application on your regular agenda is Michael Heard. They're applying for a conditional use permit at 3411 Sewers Point Road. The site is located on the west side of Sewers Point Road between Windermere Avenue and Bankhead Avenue in the Greenwood slash Elmhurst neighborhood. The proposal is to allow the operation of a banquet hall facility. The proposed use is consistent with plan north of 2030, which designates this site as commercial. The site is ZONE CC, Community Commercial. The applicant proposes to operate a banquet hall with no live entertainment or alcohol beverages is being proposed as a part of this banquet hall application. A conditional use permit is required to operate a banquet hall in the CC district. This is the site and the proposed floor plan for the banquet hall. The floor plan is labeled Assembly Area 1 and 2. However, the applicant has indicated that he will not use Assembly Area 1, which is the area you walk in immediately entering the building. There's only one restroom, which limits the occupancy to 25. However, the space can accommodate more. There are other questionable operations on this site. Hours of operation, 10:00 AM until 10:00 PM Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM until midnight Friday and Sunday, Friday through Sunday, with a total capacity of 25. No entertainment or alcohol is being proposed. Staff is concerned about the operational aspects of the request based on the application. The floor plan and the lease agreement, the lease agreement just lacks clarity. It states that they have flex space. It does not state no alcohol is permitted or entertainment. So staff is leaning towards denial.
The applicant has not called out the usage of the space in the front of the building. You have to essentially walk through, walk through one space that is completely closed off to get to the assembly space that's labeled. You have to essentially walk through, walk through one space that is completely closed off to get to the assembly space that's labeled here as a seating area. So staff has concerns about the operations and the safety aspect for anybody that needs to do any inspections or respond to the site.
So.
Also we try to.
It's the only way in and out.
Yes.
What was this before?
Was this a shop paint company? I think this was the a paint company that was in this location.
We also did ask him to send us, you know, the lease, so if you're gonna let rent it out for banquet hall, show us the lease. And the lease said, you know, flexible floor plan. Um we also asked him to confirm that at no time will there be alcohol on premises. Didn't say that in the lease, so it's just, it's very uncomfortable. We have asked and asked to, for him to lay out hit the specifics about this banquet hall and we we're not getting where we need to be for us to feel comfortable.
So I was curious if it included any of the space, it looks like there's the storefronts on the by side.
So there's not actually storefront, so on the side of the building, there is a um, there's two bay doors. One is being operated, um I'm assuming as a storage facility. The other one, um I did send one of the zoning inspectors out, I'm waiting to hear back from them, it looks like they could be running maybe a auto repair business. Um and then further back, there is a barber shop that's in that um in this building.
Is Sharon the parking lot of the church as well?
No, the church is a different property line.
Okay.
When you drive by, it is, it looks.
It looks all like.
How much they use it now, I don't know.
Not the landscape. There's, there's also only one bathroom, which is why he probably is limited to capacity.
Correct.
So apparently he's not willing to put in another restroom to uh.
So he leaves it to capacity?
So are we confused about how this is actually gonna be used?
Yes.
That's what we.
Yeah.
This, that's what we're, again, as as the.
Well, how, I mean, I don't mean you have to drink and everything, but it would seem like that would limit the use.
Yes, uh and just so the commissioner, we normally, we we do not usually give recommendations until the until the public hearing day uh and until you get the staff reports, which is the week before the public hearing. We're, we're just, we wanna make sure that we share that we are very uncomfortable with this application. We have tried to shepherd um the applicant to provide us the details that we need to make a good application. And unfortunately, um we only have what we have in front of us at this point.
Good afternoon commissioners, we're gonna continue with another one that requires a little more explanation. Uh this is the former Max Barge, um located at four three hundred Collie Avenue. This is on the northeast corner of Collie and West Forty-third Street. The restaurant closed in July. Um there was the intention for the new operator to come to buy the business and take it over and continue operating during that interim time. Um the previous owner decided to close the business and auction off all the uh equipment that was in the facility. Um so the new applicant is still moving forward. Um he's probably not getting ready to open until December at the earliest. But that's why if you saw, if you've seen that it closed and is now proposed to reopen, that's where that all came from. Um and they request this to a new rep owner to operate the restaurant with extended hours of operation, live entertainment and the sale of alcoholic beverages for on and off premise consumption. This is consistent with Norfolk twenty thirty, which designates the site as commercial. Property is on CC, community commercial. In this district, you need a conditional use permit for a restaurant with extended hours. Um in this district, that's after eleven o'clock PM. You need a CUP for live entertainment, for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption if you're selling them past five PM, and the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption. Uh here we see a picture of the site. Uh this is the applicant's floor plan. Um they have two floor plans, one with entertainment, one without entertainment. You can see that there's the the board band written there on one table with four chairs that is gonna be uh removed for the entertainment. You also know that this, this is the same floor plan as the previous operator. Um so the deck is not new, the deck has been there for a while. Um but one thing that we want to address now with you guys is that that deck uh is across the river there. There is um some significant residential, you can see the all the single-family traditional just across the river there in the yellow on the right. Um that has been a point of contention with the community over there with the previous operator.
Is it noise?
Yes.
Did they um garage doors, if they opened up, would it be a noise?
Well, which is actually a separate structure, right?
The garage doors are where the foretops are near the ramp, that's where the garage doors are.
So it's.
It's all this property.
Yeah, yeah. But that's, once that opened up, that expansion, that's where the concern from what I understood, what I read, so.
Yeah, it it was both a lot and chat and just people being on the deck late, talking, as you, people drink, they get louder.
It was both a lot and chat and just people being on the deck late, talking, as you, people drink, they get louder.
Um so we're, we are recommending um at least uh in the zoning ordinance, the neighborhood protection standards usually apply if the outdoor dining is within a hundred and fifty feet of residential. That really just kinda goes over the land and across the water, it's not, it's a little more than that distance. But we still think it might be appropriate to uh use, apply those standards to the outdoor dining here. Um the ordinance does say that you can request later hours for outdoor dining by CUP. Um but we're defaulting to what this performance standard say for the neighborhood protection, which is nine o'clock. The applicant is not happy about that. We don't necessarily think ten o'clock would be unreasonable, but we kinda wanted to see what you guys were thinking with with regards to that part of it. Both. Um there's.
Then we have song that we approved to go to ten o'clock, but the music had to stop by nine or whatever.
Yeah, um there, we have different conditions with, that we can mix and, almost mix and match. Um usually we've said no outdoor dining, can't have uh amplified sound after ten o'clock, Sunday, Sunday through Thursday, and then after midnight Friday and Saturday, that's a separate standard um that we just have generally speaking for outdoor dining, not necessarily for one that's this close to residential.
What did you say that, what were the requirements for Max Barge?
In terms of.
In terms of.
When did they have to stop their music and stop their outdoor dining?
I don't remember the exact wording of their previous special exception, it's been a while. Um they were allowed to be open until two AM, I don't believe there was restriction on, there was restriction on having outdoor entertainment, but the entertainment kind of almost felt outdoors when they rolled that garage door up. Um which was something that was not in their previous special exception, which we've done for a couple places like Elation, uh which is further up the road. Um we are proposing a condition that if that, if there's outdoor entertainment, that door be closed at the same time the outdoor dining is, which I think right now is at nine o'clock in our default recommendation.
I, I was confused about the application compared to what he, the, he, the owner had uh proffered to the community. That he said he was going to uh mitigate the noise in the um late night, but then the proposal doesn't say that. Am I correct?
Yeah, so uh I was gonna get into the hours of operation on the next slide, but I wanted to point out the outdoor dining in this part here. If you want me to go to the next slide, I'll go over that and get a little more detail about it.
So again, the, the roller is, is it on the left?
It's on the right.
On the right side, this part where it says, just to the right of the, through the deck. Oh there. And even though the band is there, it still echoes out, I guess, huh? Okay.
Dr. Wibley, for your, to your question, the previous special exception for Max Barge um stated that no use of the outdoor dining area on the deck adjacent to the water shall be permitted after eleven PM Sunday through Thursday or after midnight on Friday and Saturday.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
So the existing operation for the restaurant was eleven to two Monday through Friday and then, uh it should be eleven to two seven days a week. Uh the applicant is proposing six thirty AM until two o'clock seven days a week. Uh the applicant, previous applicant had eleven to twelve o'clock midnight for the sale of off-premise beer, that is a Virginia state code requirement. Um the applicant in his application requested to sell off premises until two o'clock, which is not allowed by state code, so we just changed it to twelve o'clock for the off-premise. The occupancy is the same, um just a slightly different layout with the entertainment option. Um and they're proposing the same entertainment. Now, this was, we got, staff received several letters of opposition to this application before uh the new, before the previous operation closed and the new ap- applicant was gonna take over. This is also before the applicant went to the civic leagues. Um they went to the two civic leagues um after they self-hosted a neighborhood meeting to meet the requirement because they said they couldn't get in touch with the civic league. And then we also sent them to Colonial Place, which wasn't included in our initial um recommendation, cause they do fall within the Highland Park Civic League. A lot of those concerns were um about the two o'clock closing. Um we are considering for the, for, so a first-time entertainment establishment, uh as a new operator, the, he will get two years sunset. Uh we are thinking that it'd be best to show that the establishment can operate in a safe and effective manner that code, that, you know, coexists with the neighborhood, um closing at midnight as opposed to two AM, at least for the first two years. And then he can come, the applicant can come back after that to ask for later outdoor dining hours or, and or later operating hours. But also wanted to get your opinion about that.
This is the applicant's first restaurant.
They own Fish Bones or Man's Fish Bones in Virginia Beach? It'd be their first restaurant in Norfolk.
So again, what's, can I, are you proposing for the music?
Um there would be, the, the time for the music would be the same as the operating hours, which would be midnight. We're recommending that the outdoor dining be closed earlier and that all the doors that are open anywhere in the establishment, either garage doors, the regular doors, all have to remain closed during entertainment after I, we're thinking nine o'clock right now, which is the default, but we can change that if you guys feel like, and my ten o'clock might be more appropriate or nine o'clock during the weekend, ten o'clock on the weekends. Um you know, there's a couple different options here, we just kinda wanted to see what you guys think might be best here.
What did we do for Elation?
I think it was ten o'clock or was it nine o'clock?
Elation was required to close uh any, any door by nine, by nine PM.
If, if there's.
If there's entertainment, correct.
Because that what, that's what the neighbors were complaining about.
It was, it was nine, it was nine.
Have any issues with the, with that since?
I've heard any concerns about Elation, Jeremy, have your te- has your team heard anything?
I don't feel like I can recall.
No, uh Elation did get amended kind of, I guess it's almost been a year at this point. But we, I don't think we've heard anything in other operations.
I, I mean, I think ten o'clock is a good time for a restaurant to and any music outdoor time. I think, I'm trying to remember what we did for Waters Edge Winery, which is right up around neighborhood. And I think, I think ten o'clock was their time, they have outdoor dining, they, but they had to, they keep the outdoor dining going till ten, but they had to shut the music off by nine or something like that. That seems reasonable to me.
So keep the dining, but stop the music at nine, is what you just said, yeah. So meaning if they have it, yeah, they have to pull them, yeah, I, I agree with that. But I think the neighbors are also concerned about just the noise, not the music.
Yeah, it, it, it was definitely both with the previous operation.
So it seems like to me they could keep working as long as they were inside, keep going.
Sure, they don't have to be outside.
Yeah, for a weekend, I mean, I can see staying home longer, but they, I think they just have to evade the noise and be inside.
Bob, did they mention anything about, uh, cause I, I've been there, I don't remember hearing music being piped outside. So I don't know if they even plan on doing that, I know they have a live band, but that's only inside.
But if they have the doors open, the, if the noise goes, yeah, the garage door was.
Right, I'm not saying about the garage door, I'm just saying I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they do that, didn't check.
Alright, so it sounds to me like you guys want, uh the garage door closes nine o'clock. Any outdoor amplified sound cut off at nine o'clock as well. And then possibly extending the outdoor dining hours to ten o'clock.
Yeah, I, I.
At least on Friday and Saturday.
I would, I would, music and outdoor at ten, and on weekends, and then indoors afterward.
And then nine, so not just clarifying, ten o'clock on the week, on Friday and Saturday, nine o'clock was the outdoor dining during the week?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And as far as the two AM versus midnight? I, I mean, I, if they're experienced operator, I mean, I'm not.
Yeah, I would agree, I mean, as long as the noise is evaded, I, I'm okay with them being open longer. You know, I would like to know, cause they, obviously the article about it definitely said he was going to change the situation with the noise, so that didn't seem consistent with what we're seeing here. And I just wondered if there's been a change since this application or.
We said this was submitted before he went to the civic league, so, yeah.
So it may be that he's already have plans to just accommodate.
It's also, I'm sorry, the, the application doesn't cover all the specifics of the things, it doesn't cover, like closing outdoor doors, that's part of the conditions we apply to a CUP that has entertainment with those style doors. Um there was a discussion about closing the establishment at midnight, but it was unclear if Colonial Place Civic League didn't reach a consensus. I think there were one or two people who said they wanna close at midnight, another two people said, let's give this person a chance. Uh but based on the proximity of the surrounding residential and the history of issues specifically with this location, that, that's why we're leaning towards midnight. If you, based on the operator's experience, you guys wanna look at, you know, two o'clock, that's, that's a decision you guys can make.
So we go to restaurants, I guess, in the two AM?
They're looking pretty about Elation, so. So if they want to, hey, y'all put me at nine, how did you get ten o'clock? Now I gotta go through the whole CUP process again, pay another X amount of dollars to get an extra hour.
We'll, we'll double check to ensure that it's consistent, I believe the nine, the nine, the nine AM closing of the doors is consistent. Um the outdoor dining will make sure, I believe Elation's approval is only till ten, I think. Paul and I looked at it earlier, it's only, they're only open, their operating hours are until ten PM. So it shouldn't be inconsistent with, with what we've approved for a similar establishment. We'll take, we'll take a look at it and we'll, we'll bring it back based on the comments of the commissioner.
And I, I was reading the email that Rob received from the applicant, it was post-civic league meeting, he still is CUP AM. It was discussed at the civic league, but he got different opinions there from multiple people, so he's still, he clarified in his email, he still wants two AM.
He's clarified with that, with me on the phone as I was walking over.
Clarified with that, with me on the phone as I was walking over.
When, when does Elation close inside?
Their, their, their operation stopped at ten PM. That's, that's, I think that's how they operate, that's what we.
Let me look that up, there might be eleven on the weekends.
Eleven on the weekends, but it's not, it's, it's.
It's not two AM.
No, no.
Well, and, and two is consistent with, this is a bar and they're open and they're in a residential area
At midnight.
which is still different than downtown or anywhere else where we got people moving.
So they do have until two o'clock now, Max Barge.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And, and Craft and um what's the name of the pizza place?
Covens.
Covens, what, what about them?
Pretty sure they have late hours.
It makes sense.
Yeah. We'll, we'll provide a um, a summary.
See how they think it's stay up.
We'll pu- we'll provide a summary of the other operations uh on Collie Avenue that have a similar exposure.
I, I'd be interested to know, um, you want to be consistent and also what were some of, I guess, the initial application for some of the folks? Did you tell them to stop at ten or did they say, we're good with ten?
Yes.
Yeah, the difference I think here though is that post-drip of residential that's across from that water, it echoes. Well, that's why I said, I, I'm, I'm fine with abating the noise early.
Yeah.
But whether or not they have to close, cause they are.
Yeah.
And I think Craft, I'm, I'm, I'm almost positive that stays up with quite a bit later. And that's right next door, really, two doors down. Thank you.
It's a little hard to listen. Alright, it's not getting any easier.
Alright, good afternoon, this is a condition's permit for Harbor Inn, address is seventy-nine twenty-four Chesty Boulevard. Location, east side, Chesty Boulevard, south of Eagle Avenue in the South Bayview neighborhood. Existing additions are commercial and the proposals to a. Existing additions are commercial and there's proposals to allow the operating, continued operation of a restaurant with extended hours, the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption and additional amusement devices. Uh, the proposed use is consistent, planned off for twenty thirty, designate the site as commercial. Uh, zoning is CC, community commercial, uh, at this site, a CP is required for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption after five PM, operating hours past eleven PM and is a restaurant with five or more gaming positions. Uh, here's a picture of the site, the restaurant has been in existence since nineteen seventy-seven and the applicants took full ownership in twenty-ten. Uh, they received a special exception in two thousand fourteen for entertainment establishment with permitted, which permitted on-premise alcohol sales, operating hours until two AM, live entertainment with a DJ and four pool tables. Uh, here's a picture of the floor plan, uh, the applicant proposes to open one hour earlier, add additional gaming positions and no longer provide live entertainment. For the proposed hours operation, eight AM, two AM, seven days a week, for the capacity, eighty-five seats indoors, zero seats outdoors, for a total of ninety-one. And as I mentioned, they no longer wish to have live entertainment. Uh, the applicant does propose to have six queen machines, quick, six queen skill game machines. However, we, if we recommend approval, a condition will be added to not allow games of skill, which are still legal under Virginia statutes. And the South Baby Civic League supports this application. If we do recommend approval, we do, we will have a condition that, uh, skill games, games of skill will not be legal. He did, he is proposing six queen machine games, so.
Just to clarify that, applicant is proposing to have those machines. The code of Virginia, as we've reviewed it with the city attorney's office, does not allow the type of machines. So the condition that, um, that would be applied to this would be that machines that don't meet that, meet that definition per the code of Virginia would not be permitted at this location.
Any citations, violations or anything from this establishment?
No violations.
You said this has been in operation since seventy-seven?
Correct.
Not at this location, right?
Uh, to best my knowledge, this location. I can, could you?
They were on Fishman's and Chesapeake for.
I think that's right, I don't think they've been here since.
It, it might have been that they moved their business license, cause we check, we check it against the, so the business has been in operation. Okay, cool.
Anything else?
Just to, just to, just to prepare the commission for that though, the applicant is asking for those machines that may come up in the discussion. We are very, very matter of fact that we don't, we don't agree that they are legal and that's why the condition will prohibit those types of machines. So we just wanna assure that the commission's aware of the, the concern.
Why would you consider something that's not allowed?
Um.
Um, they're gonna say that they are legal, so, um, the definition of these machines, um, when they were carved out, made illegal.
It's our interpretation.
Um, includes language that says that the payment, um, i, i, mechanism is by inserting something in the machine, a ticket or a token or money or something. Um, the company that makes these, the Basamatic Company, that makes these, under the, um, a product named Queen of Virginia, ha, has since come out with a version two of the machine that does away with the slot where you put the ticket or the token or the money. And, and they have an arrangement now where you make the payment to the person behind the bar and then they activate the machine based on when you paid them. So they've, um, think that they've done an, and run around the portion of the definition that includes where you make the payment. And they convinced a judge out in a locality outside of Richmond, um, that now that definition of what is illegal in Virginia doesn't apply to these machines anymore because they put a piece of tape over the slot where you put the money. Um, it's more complicated than that, of course, but, um, there is a judge out of, um, maybe, um.
Hanover County.
Um, that is at the, at the district court level, so not even, not even to the circuit court, but the, the, the initial basic, um, small claims court in Virginia, um, has made that determination. So that has no precedential value, but they think it does. Um, and they, the manufacturer of these machines, who's marketing the machines, is telling people who rent them, um, that, that they are legal. Um, so, um, that, that's why they're gonna say, we think we can do it. We're hearing from the people who make these machines and we're hearing from a district court judge in Reica that they're, that they're okay. We don't think either of those are, are accurate.
And they're legal because it's gambling?
Right, right, that definition of a, of a skill game machine is listed among the, among the types of gambling that are still illegal in Virginia.
So if we were to approve. And he goes forward with the machines that he's already told us he plans to use. We would, there would be enforcement, like right away?
I promise there would be. The city, um, zoning staff doesn't do, um, enforcement of gambling laws, crimes.
Okay.
Um, we could refer it to the police, they might, um, refer it to the Commonwealth Attorney. Where it goes from there would be a decision for the Commonwealth Attorney, not for the city. Um, um, it would, it would be a first to have somebody prosecuted for these machines.
Sounds exciting.
So, so do we have to contend, engage in that conversation with partners' application?
Um. Right, I just wanna let, I want, we want to make sure the commission's aware that there, this is a concern of the applicant. The applicant is coming in specifically because those machines are what they want to add, yes, so.
So you're recommending approval, but not with those machines?
We haven't said for certain, but if we're recommending approval, like I said, the condition would be added to ban or not allow skill games at the establishment.
But he's telling us he's going to use those machines.
He wants to do, correct.
Yeah.
He also has, he also has pool tables and other things that require the amendment to, to the condition use permit for the Commercial Rec Center. So it's not that it's not, there are other, he's got other items that are covered under this, so.
Yeah, pool table tables that he wants to add.
He's got four pool tables and two additional non-queen games.
Golf tee, things of that nature. Alright.
I'm serious, that's all.
Alright, another restaurant, Tower Seven Holdings, uh, condition is permanent, eleven fifty-three West Oceanview Avenue. Location, south side of West Oceanview Avenue, west of Hansford Place in the Willoughby Neighborhood. Uh, existing conditions are commercial and proposals to allow the operation of a restaurant with the sale of alcoholic beverages for on and off premise consumption. Uh, proposed use is consistent, planned off for twenty thirty, designate the site as residential mixed. Uh, zoning is CN, neighborhood commercial, on the CN District, a CP is required for on-premise alcohol sales after five PM and for off-premise sales as well. Uh, here's a picture of the site, uh, the applicant actually owns Swell Charcoal Grill, which is directly next door, uh, and they do have alcohol sales. Uh, while the name of the restaurant is yet to be determined, the intention is for it to be a barbecue restaurant. And since it's a restaurant, a meal purchase will be required for off-premise sales of alcohol. Uh, hours of operation proposed, eleven AM to eleven PM, Monday through Sunday. For the capacity, forty-two seats indoors, zero seats outdoors, for a total of fifty-five, and he does not propose any live entertainment. And the Willoughby Civic League, uh, supports this application.
Is he owns the business next door?
Swell Charcoal Grill, yes ma'am.
About him?
Uh, Swell Charcoal Grill, the restaurant next door, yes. Yes, well.
And this is a, a different restaurant, but they'll both be next door and they'll run both?
Correct.
He doesn't have any violations?
No. Any other questions? So this applicant is proposing to redevelop a former box pharmacy into a twenty-four hour convenience store at the corner of East Little Creek Road and Halpern Drive. Uh, proposed use does not conflict with plan of for twenty thirty, which designates the property as commercial. Property is zone CR. In CR, CPs are required for the convenience store and the accessory uses of gasoline sales, sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption and sale of smoking or vaping products. Uh, staff will be, uh, recommending as we typically do that no vaping products be sold. Uh, we're still discussing with the applicant on whether they're going to, uh, object to that or not. Here we see the site for the proposed seven-eleven, it's currently vacant, it was previously a box-style pharmacy. Here's the applicant's most recent site plan, um, since it is a new development, it needs to go through the city site plan process and will need to comply with the development standards contained in the zoning ordinance. Um, there is some con, concern that this proposal does not conform to the commercial plan book, which I've got here. Um, this commercial plan book recommends vehicle-oriented uses be located on the site in a way that minimizes the view of the use from the street. Uh, so for this site, what that means is, is instead of having the fuel canopy on the corner and the gas station in the back corner, uh, it would bring the, it would get the convenience store itself to the corner and put a fuel canopy to, to the back. The pictures that you see there on the bottom are some examples from, uh, other ones in the city. Uh, two of those are seven-elevens that have, uh, the convenience store on the corner. We're still working with the applicant, uh, on seeing if that's a possibility for this location. Um, they did get me a, a very, um, a very conceptual plan not long ago, uh, that, you know, it's too late to get into here. But, um, I think we might be able to, if, if seven-eleven as the applicant will approve it, I think we, we have some possibility to get that taken care of. Um. Um, it's in an LLC, I don't know if it's an LLC that's related to seven-eleven or not.
So there have been some discussions by the council member in the area at the East Little Creek Mall, advisory committee, um, this past week. We also, Russell, do you wanna share the concern from the ci, the civic league?
Um, so I received twelve emails opposing and one supporting. Primarily related to traffic, um, you know, from the site. Reoriented with the building to the corner, we think might be better for traffic, you know, so that people are, you know, they, they have more spot to pull into the site uh, before it gets backed up. The other concern was about the, the other seven-eleven on Halpern that's right across the street, uh, which the applicant has indicated the franchisee of that location will be taking over the new location and then they will be closing that location. And, uh, we're still working on details, but they've said that they're not going to allow someone to compete with them to also have a convenience store smoking and vaping and sale of ABC.
So at one time there was a concern in the city that seven-eleven had vacated a number of sites and, and had left them vacant and they were, you know, obviously in eyesore, does that continue?
Um, eh, eh, I think it's the same issue at this point, so most of the ones that have been, um, I think, I don't wanna say vacated, but they're no longer the flag of the store, but the ones that were the franchised, the, no, it's not, yeah, the franchised version is not the ones that are run by seven-eleven corporate. So that's where the, you've seen a number of them converted into other operators, um, which we, one will be on your future agenda.
A lot of them are still owned by seven, the property's still owned by seven-eleven, but operated by somebody else.
And in, and in this situation, the one across the street could be a convenience store, so.
So that's, that's part of staff's, yeah, that's part of staff's concern is that.
The building building, yeah.
Well, uh, staff's concern is that we don't want a concentration of the use in the area, so, um, which is why the applicant has said that they were willing to, um, have no, not essentially no use, some, no convenience store somewhere used at that location, working out the details of that, accomplish that.
Well, we wanted something from them, cause yeah, seven-eleven owns that other site, but they're just saying, yeah, we're not gonna let it be a, okay, well, you're saying that, but how do we, how do we tie you to that?
Right, more importantly, if, if it's not a convenience store, it's likely to be empty and, you know, so then that's not good either.
And the existing location is grandfathered for all of the uses too, so we don't have as much say and enforcement ability as we do with, uh, the proposed new location, which would have CPs for all of these uses.
I, I mean, I know on Tyler Water and Bayview, there's two seven-elevens along opposite corner, they both have gas and they both, I think are owned by the same person, so.
Really? She's more familiar to get the money.
And they're all, they're always busy.
Depending on where you're, yeah.
Yeah, depending on which direction.
Well, I would say I would not vote for this unless we brought the main building out to the street, like the design, you know, are suggested.
Right.
I mean, the building, the existing building's not that old, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate they couldn't find a use for that.
You will see creative use of another, right, uh, similar building, uh, on a future agenda. So we have someone that's coming forward with an adaptive reuse, but this one, um, this is what they're proposing at this location.
Is this a, working with, are these building owners, one just RFPs for different type developments? Or just kind of letting the building owner, it's up to wherever they want to come in?
Um, economic development, um, through, um, Wayne Green Shop, which is the real estate office and economic development, they normally will reach out to places that have either, anything that they find vacant to try to offer any assistance that they have. Helping share with them or guiding people to them, uh, that are looking for spaces as well as, in this case, um, there's a, they did the study, the corridor study, so they're sharing with them, hey, look, this is the possibility to attract a tenant. You can use some of these renderings to help attract tenants, so, um, there is an engagement piece on that.
Anything else?
And a couple should be a little bit easier. Um, seven-five-seven contracting for condition use permit at eight twenty-four and eight twenty-six West, sorry, eight twenty-six West Twenty-Sixth Street. Uh, that's on the north side of West Twenty-Sixth Street, west of Colley Avenue. There are currently two vacant twenty-five foot lots and the proposal is to construct two single-family homes on these lots. Uh, the proposed use is consistent, will plan off for twenty thirty, which designates the site as multi-family corridor. Uh, constructing two single-family structures on narrow lots would increase the density, which supports the segregation. And plan off for twenty thirty, uh, I believe it's chapter seven, calls for the provision of a range of housing choices, both, both in terms of geography and affordability. Properties on single-family traditional, um, in this district, you can request a condition use permit to develop lots that otherwise would not be developable, uh, using the narrow lot process. So they own both, each lot's twenty-five feet wide and a hundred and five feet long. Together, since they're held in common ownership, they form one zoning lot, which would normally require a minimum lot with a forty to fifty feet, depending on the preliminary lotting pattern, and minimum lot size of four thousand to five thousand square feet. So normally the conforming zoning lot would only allow one house to be built on the whole property, but since they're, um, already subdivided, the applicant, um, can request to build a, two single-family homes that are, follow the narrow lot pattern. Um, this was made possible by twenty-twenty-four zoning ordinance text amendment that made that decision go from the BZA, where they could request a variance from the lot width and lot size standards, to a policy decision from city planning commission and city council to determine. Um, so the zoning allowance allows for the CP to be granted to develop narrow lots in this district, um, as long as the lots are not less than twenty-five feet wide or twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, the only principal use permitted on the lot is single-family detached dwelling and they have to conform with the single-family detached form standards, which includes a review, uh, that's done with, uh, with Dean Cooper, um, to ensure there's, there's things that we look for when we're developing these lots. Uh, so this is, obviously it doesn't look like that today, um, but, uh, that, that is, that is the lot we are looking at right here. Um, it'd be split down the middle with one house on either side. So when we normally look at these, um, if we're determining the predominant pattern of the, of the lot, uh, we usually look at the house five hundred feet in either direction. Um, we take out all the non-residential properties and, uh, any of the lots that aren't technically facing the main street we're looking at, um, to determine if the, it's appropriate to have lots that are less than fifty feet wide or, uh, greater than, or fifty feet or greater. Um, so that yellow lot at the top there, that one's owned by the city, it's twenty feet wide. There's one zone, lot zoned IL, which is to the far right, it's not really pictured, um, so we didn't include that in the calculation. Uh, but there are ten lots that are less than fifty feet wide, this includes the applicant's two properties, those are highlighted in red. And then we have seven lots that are fifty feet greater or wide, uh, those are just the white ones, the, uh, the blue ones, I apologize, are, uh, greater than twenty-five feet, but less than fifty feet still. So you can see, we do have, especially looking right at the applicant's properties, which in that main cluster there in the red, are all less than fifty feet wide. Um, even the ones directly to the right of the applicant's property are both twenty-five foot wide. Even the ones directly to the right of the applicant's property are both 25 foot wide. So we do have a, an appropriateness pattern to the neighborhood, which would indicate that less than 50 feet wide is appropriate and that other houses nearby are 25 feet wide. So this is what the applicant's proposing. In our, in our other applications we've had that have requested to do some type of housing that are side-by-side like this, we've requested that the features of the house be different in terms of their color scheme or other architectural features. That would be recommended for this, this one as well. Are there any questions on this one? Yeah. Both 25-foot wide lots. As this, as this, no.
Did I see an apartment building on the left?
Yes.
And is that their driveway to get to parking in the rear?
Yes.
For the apartment, but not for these two structures?
Right, but for the apartments.
And he owns the apartment too? Oh, okay.
Correct.
Okay. So that's not the only.
Correct.
That's correct.
One other thing to notice, they're not required to have on, to have off-street parking for these types of lots, so there's no, there's no driveway for these lots. It's just right up to the street.
So there's no garage or anything like that?
No.
However, there is available on-street parking on, on 26th Street.
Yeah, this is not in front of the house.
It is, it is across, you're correct. It is across, it's, it is across the pavement of 26th Street, but it is right in front.
Now, there's houses on, across the, they're on 25-foot lots that are being built. Thinking about Huntersville, for example. I'm seeing these type of houses, or these smaller houses being bought for the plant commission. Why is that?
This is the first group that's been eligible for the CUP since the change of maybe 2024. That meets all the, that can meet all requirements. There have been some other issues with some that have come before, so some people have just not been ready to go. They've asked us about it and then they're like, okay, I need to take some time and think about what I want to do here.
I'm pretty sure I'm seeing active construction, but I guess depending on when they started, may have been right before and they've just been dragging along until now. So that could be the case.
There are some houses that can be developed on, if they are not in common ownership, they can be developed on 25-foot wide lots. It still goes through our current review process that we have. So there are some that are permitted by right. And then also, of course, the Huntersville that is explicitly called out in the ordinance that it is permitted by right to build those houses on a narrow lot. These are the first, as Rob said, these are the first ones that someone's asking, instead of building one, they want to build two, so they're bringing it forward.
Okay. I'm just thinking about one, even one that's off Valentine. I'm thinking in vision now, so, I guess it's more of a timing thing than with this.
Single lots are not uncommon because the current situation is a very single, non-conformity zoning lot that has remained in its own ownership and has never been attached to another lot for decades. We still have that a lot. It would, it would be uncommon to see this type being built on side-by-side lots because usually when somebody comes and buys those lots, they become married by common ownership. We've had that rule since 1992 at least. It says, once you've assembled enough land by common ownership to meet those zoning ordinance, you can't break it back apart again. We've stopped it for months, so we've had that commission for 30 years. But the single, the one-offs are still, they still pop up from time to time.
Thank you, Rob.
All right, next up is the shops at Salto V. 7911 at Shore Drive, this is on the west side of Shore Drive, just to the north of East Little Creek. It's currently vacant and the proposal is to construct a restaurant, the single lane drive-through. This is the one Elizabeth and Faith previewed for you earlier. Consistent with plan off of 2030, which designates the site as commercial. Property is owned conditional CC. In the conditional CC, in the conditional CC district, you need a conditional use permit for drive-through facility, large scale. So a little bit of history about this site. This site and the site behind it was conditionally rezoned. And in the conditional use permit for the residential, that's going to be built behind, on farther away from Shore Drive, one of those conditions was that the, that the, the commercial building goes through a design review process, which includes review by, by ARB, CPC, indoor city council. So that's why this, this was previewed in your design review items, which is technically separate from the drive-through, even though they're really approving for the same thing. This is the applicant's site plan. You can see they're going to do some plantings. And then the drive-through will be located on the rear of the building away from Shore Drive. As Elizabeth and Faith pointed out, this is going to be a Tim Hortons, some other elevations, and the same renderings you guys saw earlier, but we have to make the presentation for each one separately. They're proposing to be open, have the drive-through open from 5 o'clock AM until 10 o'clock PM, seven days a week.
Hello again. Valerie Taylor, Conditionally Use Permit for Short-Term Rental Renewal. Address is 8421 Nathan Avenue. Location of the site is the north side of Nathan Avenue between Saban Avenue and Media Avenue. This is in the Roosevelt area neighborhood. Existing conditions are single-family and the proposal is to allow the continued operation of a short-term rental unit. The proposed use is consistent, plan off of 2030, designates the set as a single-family suburban. Zoning is SF6 in this district, a CUP is required for all vacation rentals with four or more bedrooms. Here's a picture of the site. The applicant started operating in 2021 under administrative permit and received a CUP for vacation rental in 2023. The applicant will continue to self-manage the property and no violations or complaints have been made in the past two years. For the neighborhood analysis, within 500 feet, 100% of residential parcels are single-family and 100% of the residential units are single-family. If approved, 2% of residential parcels and 2% of residential units within 500 feet would be short-term rentals. And the numbers, this site is included in those numbers. Any questions? No violations, no complaints, no.
You might not have done your recommendation yet, as far as the renewal.
If we were going to provide a five-year, five-year for this one.
So this applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to operate a vacation rental in a four-bedroom, single-family home on the west side of Seventh Base Street between Pleasant Avenue and East Ocean View Avenue in the East Ocean View neighborhood. A short-term rental does not conflict with plan Norfolk 2030, which designates the property as residential mixed. Property is owned RC. In RC, all vacation rental homes with more than three bedrooms need the CUP to operate. Here's a site for the proposed short-term rental. We're not requiring any improvements. So this property does have a history of STR use. The applicant currently utilizes the property as his primary residence. In July 2021, he was administratively permitted as a home stay under the previous regulations. In September 2023, he was granted a CUP to continue operating as a home stay. That CUP is still valid. The applicant proposes to relocate his primary residence and is requesting the ability to switch from home stay to vacation rental. He has never received a violation. As a refresher, home stays and vacation rentals are both short-term rentals. They operate under substantially similar rules. Home stays require the owner to maintain the property as their primary residence. They can rent individual rooms if the property owner's on-site, but they are permitted to rent the whole home and not be on-site. Vacation rentals require the owner to live elsewhere and they can only rent the whole home. They cannot rent individual rooms. Since this is a different use and the applicant no longer needs to live on the property, staff views this as a new application and if we recommend it for approval, will be recommended for two years for the expiration. For the neighborhood analysis, within 500 feet approximately 66% of residential parcels and 39% of residential units are single-family. All-inclusive, if this application is approved, approximately 4.3% of parcels and 2.3% of residential units in 500 feet would be short-term rentals. And those numbers do include this property since he's already permitted. Any questions? Yes. Yeah, he, he still will live within, I think he lives 15 minutes. Like his new property, which he identified to us, is 15 minutes away. So he'll still manage it, just as he's been doing, just with his primary residence elsewhere.
I'm sure we can see it. We had Chris do the, explain and provide a presentation on the motion to initiate the repeal of plan of 2030 and to adopt, and I think 2050 is a new comprehensive plan.
So I'll move to the next text amendment initiation. There is a text amendment that staff is requesting regarding storage units. During recent staff reviews of the uses in the zoning ordinance, staff noted there were concerns that were voiced about concentration of self-storage units in the city and the inefficient land use that they can be due to the size of the property as well as the limited economic, economic activity that comes from the property. Self-storage facilities are currently permitted in the CC, the CR districts, so the majority of the commercial districts. BCO and BCI, which are our business commerce districts and light industrial zoning district, and those are permitted by right, and so they, they only need to go through the plan review process. For conditional use permits, they are permitted in the transit-oriented development supportive area as well as G1 district, which is along Granby Street. Here's a map showing the location of the zoning districts that allow short, self-storage units. And the dots, the purple, I guess purple, circles there show the location of what we, what we know as being, operating self-storage units throughout the city. Economic development has voiced concerns regarding the use of self-service storage and strategic properties throughout the city. Again, noting that there is concern about the limited economic activity that comes from the site and the limited job creation. Staff is requesting the initiation of a text amendment that would convert the, those that are permitted by right to be permitted by conditional use permit so that an individual and site-specific analysis of each location can be done to determine if it is appropriate to have self-storage units at that location. And again, for the two other districts that already have it, those are areas that were of concern, where it could impact economic activity and other issues regarding surrounding land uses. A CUP is already required, so we would just be mimicking where it's already required by conditional use permit. Any questions? I'll handle the confusion.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So this request we received from a developer in the city who's interested in developing a piece of property, a one-story commercial building in the traditional character district. As he was evaluating the property, he indicated that he, he discovered the form standard requirement in the zoning ordinance that says you have to have a 20-foot minimum height. So before I go into the request and the specific standard, I want to give you the background on the form standards because it's not something that we talk about that often. So just to give you the background. Form standards is something that was brought into the zoning ordinance in 2018. It is, has a variety of different purposes, but development quality, compatibility, sense of place, those types of things. That's really what we were focusing on it. We mostly talk about it. We've brought several changes to you over the years, primarily around the single-family form standards. But there are three different sets of form standards. There are ones that apply to single-family development. There are ones that apply to multifamily development and there are ones that apply to non-residential development. And each one speaks to specific design and, or not design, sorry, form requirements for, for new development. And they only apply to new development in the zoning, in, in the city. So your typical rehab of a building, there's, there's, there's a number of exceptions that would come into play that would keep you from having to meet that, this requirement for retrofit in an old building. So again, staff received a request to remove altogether one, one requirement out of the form standards for non-residential construction. And that is, you see it in the italics here, that all building frontages that face a street shall be multi-story or a single story shall be at least 20 feet in height. Now, I note, this is different from the zoning standards. The zoning ordinance, so the, the CC zoning district, our most common commercial zoning district, it, it comes with a, its own height limit. It doesn't have a minimum, it doesn't have a minimum height limit. Some districts do have minimum height limits. They're not typical, so the, the form standard would bring in that minimum height limit. Then there's the maximum, 65 feet typically in, in our, in those districts. But there's, this puts essentially a minimum form standard into play that we do want that, that height. But I'll say the, the standard does imply a suburban, so it's only in downtown, traditional and coastal. We, we do have an exception written into the ordinance, so essentially a way out. If you go through the Architecture Review Board, you can request a, a reduction. I'll go through some examples and we are fairly broad in interpreting what request an exception is. We've had projects that come in for encroachments, projects that come in for development certificates, various types of processes where they'll come in and the ARB will look at it. If the ARB thinks it's a good approach to, to be less than 20 feet at height, then we, we interpret that as we've granted the exception to this requirement. And so we're fairly open, open in it on it. It doesn't happen very often. We don't get very many new one-story buildings in, outside of the suburban character district of the city. Particularly since 2018, there aren't that many examples, but I've got four of them that I'll go through with you. And actually, you had a fifth one today in the coastal character district that is, Faith believes it was about 22 feet high, so that one would, would seem to meet the requirements. Just examples where we have, under construction right now in Monticello, obviously it's a Shake Shack. This one is a 25-foot height from, from the facade to the top of the building. So this one would meet the requirements. It's in the traditional character district and it's more than 20 feet in height. Right next door to that, first watch, 23-foot height. There's a question as to how we interpret the cornice and sometimes the buildings have varying, different architectural features. We're open in it on how we interpret these things. The form standard doesn't spell out, you measure it to exactly this point in the building. So we'll work with someone if you're close. Here's an example of a building that, that got approval to waive the requirement. This is Chicken Salad, Chicken Salad Chick on Hampton Boulevard and there's a couple other retail operators in it. This is a 16-foot high building. However, you'll note there is a, there's screening, mechanical screening above that. Again, how do we exactly do interpret this? This one went through Architecture Review Board, part of the railroad project, railroad dish, rail yard project. And the justification for the lower facades in this is because they were mimicking some of the old historic structures, so that were at that lower height. So that was, that was part of the calculus for doing that here. Again, it's possible that we could look at this and say it's actually higher than 16 feet because of that mechanical screening, but we showed it as a 16-foot building. This is one that is under construction on Granby Street right now. Again, went through ARB. I believe the reason it went through ARB was for an encroachment. But again, it was essentially a historic rehab, similar to that rail yard project, infill development. The building next to it on the right is existing. It's lower, it's, it's about 15 feet, so this building, the, the thought was to keep it at that same height so that we're not standing out above. So again, went through the Architecture Review Board to have the lower requirement. So again, just to recap, the current standard downtown, traditional, coastal is either to have a multi-story building, commercial, non-residential, or to have a 20-foot minimum height. We have an applicant, a, a request. We've received a request to eliminate this standard. However, staff just wanted to point out that there already is a good out for this standard, but we are not making a recommendation at this point. We're just simply asking, we, we're bringing the request to initiate the amendment to you for your meeting in two weeks. Any questions? Any questions?
I did the presentation earlier, so we won't. This is also hopefully on the agenda, so.
Okay. Thank you. What are we thinking for the consent agenda?
Number eight.
I was thinking eight, yeah.
I mean, I think you go, number nine for the two years.
Only because it was a short-term rental, it was a home stay, and he's still self-managing it.
We didn't limit to two years, but I know it's different.
Fair conversation.
They did the other for what, two separate times and would know. Number nine.
Yeah.
Number nine operated under the home stay requirements.
Correct.
Like we, where we, two years versus five.
Because it's switching from home stay to.
Before, he lived on-site. He was living there.
Yeah.
He's not going to be there now. It's a different animal.
Did we hear that he lives fifteen minutes?
Well, but he, right, but he's not living in, in the facility.
It's a different rental room versus the whole house.
And it's, but it's a vacation rental versus an STR.
Well, a home stay.
It's a home stay.
Okay.
Mount found even at two years.
Well, it's sort of different.
Yeah.
What about six? In your lot? Seems like they were good examples of that already being done.
This is such a short agenda. I'm not sure we should put any of them on there and like talk about.
Well, unfortunately, well, we don't want to, let's, let's, I worry about a few of the items that go a little while. I'll just say that. Some of the ones at the beginning of the agenda, though, I guess. No, we should.
And four. It's the gambling machine.
That was.
Could say nine. Could say nine? Okay, six two.
Yeah, I mean, would it qualify as?
It's, it's up to the commission. Would you like to have any consent agenda? Only thing that we would recommend is staff, is if we're having trouble identifying information from an applicant, we will let the commission know. We would like them to make presentation in front of you so that they can actually explain their operations a little bit clearer.
So.
Still ones that you have proposed, we have not had that concern.
In that, whatever conditions are recommended in the staff report for any consent item agendas, those are the conditions that will attach, unless you pull it off, in order to adjust and make adjustments, so.
Did you have a concern about access to parking behind there, the lot being right up next to that driveway?
I did at first because I haven't seen it. And but finding out that there's another driveway on the other side, I was just more worried about squeezing in, in between those two, but considering there's another choice, I felt a lot better about it.
I remember the other houses next to those lots. They don't have off-street parking, like they park cross-street as well. Okay, I remember driving back and remember they had driveway. I don't think they did.
The ones that are on the larger lots.
I do. Yeah. They must have been for a house that was their previous.
Yeah.
The driveway is there, but, yeah. I'm climbing those three.
Okay, thank you. Any other thinking on the question? Did I write this comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council still has been on recess, so no updates there. We do want to thank all the commissioners for attending the APA Virginia Conference. Hopefully you found some information that was useful and you could utilize or at least could begin to spark continued conversation. And so we hope to do that. I know there was talk about. Sorry, debriefing staff, which I haven't had a chance to do yet, so hopefully then, hopefully we can then do the same together. On Monday, the housing, the mayor's housing commission is meeting for a retreat-style meeting. Chris and I will be presenting NFK twenty-fifty, anything that relates to housing. As you know, the basis for our, for most of the housing recommendations that we have came from the professional recommendation of the Department of Housing Community Development as well as the housing study that was already performed. And so that'll be the basis of the presentation that we'll be providing, is the same information that you're familiar with, so. More to come on that. Hopefully we'll, we'll find out what the, that housing commission decides to move.
What, what time is that?
I think it's nine o'clock, not at Slover Library.
It's like walking.
It's only until one o'clock. Or at, if you want to. If, if you choose to come, but it, it should be very interesting to listen to the conversation. There's a number of presentations that are going to be provided. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any comments from the commissioners?
Could you remind me what, what day the retreat is, please?
October.
Thursday and October.
I was going to go by memory. That's not a good thing. October, do it all day? Just about.
First Thursday.
Yes, thank you, Sherri. October second. We'll hone in the agenda and normally if it's, if we tighten up, I think we, we didn't go until two o'clock last month, last year, I think. So if we can, if we can tighten it up, we will try to tighten it up, but we want to assure, assure proper conversation. I know we'll probably have a robust conversation about site improvements.
Mm-hmm. I'd also like to talk about meetings, the meetings format.
I'm going to be a country, choose first with the Republicans. At opportunity, Italy, so I gotta love you guys, but.
You're giving up Italy, you're giving up this for Italy.
Yeah.
I'll send you a photo.
I wouldn't want to zoom in.
And I think, I know some of the things Lisa Tom talked about at the retreat, we learned a lot of things and talked to other commissioners around the state. So if there's anything that, subject or an item that you'd like to maybe have part of the discussion, you know, please let us know. This is our time to really dig deep. And I would say that we are adjourned. Thank you.